Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the City Council to conduct interviews to fill the Planning Commission vacancy. Brandon, you get to interview the people that-
I get to do it?
-possibly going to take your place. And to do that, in the past, we've had the applicants wait in the room and then we would call them out. And so-
If it all sounds great, I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have two applicants, Dustin Moss and Andrea Stein. We have Andrea's resume first in our packet, so we'll just interview her first. And we'd like to ask them, Cindy, perhaps you could help him. Dustin, are you here? Yes, if you would follow Cindy, she'll take you back to a waiting area, and then when we're ready, we'll call for you. So, please have a seat with the microphone there, because this will be televised, and that way, everybody can hear the words of wisdom you're going to share with us here. So, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on the Planning Commission?
Okay. I moved here, actually, four years ago this week.
Touch your mic on. There you go.
Oh, there you go. I moved here four years ago this week. I really love this community, and financially, my husband and I are all in in this community. We have a considerable investment, and we want, we are very interested in how this community grows, and the downtown area is of particular interest to us. And I'm a very creative person. I always have been, and my husband likes to accuse me of being the idea person, and not in a good way. So, that's the kind of, and I love to do research, and I think I could be helpful in that way to the Commission. And I've been trying to follow their meetings, and I've done a lot of it online to see, you know, what their issues are right now. And, I mean, there's, other than that, I spent a lot of years, I spent 30 years covering Planning Commission meetings, so I do have a bit of an idea about what they do. So, you know, that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Okay. The, and what we, for our new council members, what we usually do is go around and ask questions. We try to ask questions that give us information to help us make our decision, and we try to make the question as much as we can, generic enough so that we can ask both candidates. And if somebody's ready to start, you can, or if everybody needs some time to think, I'll-
Andrea, what do you feel is the primary role, or what should be the primary role of the Planning Commission in our city today?
Well, I think the primary role would have to be listening and then doing the research, and trying to talk to different people. For myself, talking to different people in the community, like people who are in banking, loans, just to get a feeling for, you know, what some of the challenges are. But I think mainly, it's listening, following, and knowing the law and what the code is for this particular situation.
Thank you.
Okay. Rem?
I have two, and they're pretty quick. My first one is, how do you feel about the deregulation of some of our codes?
I think that it's really important to help some businesses come along, and especially if you're looking at tackling this urban renewal and revitalization. I think there has to be an easier way for businesses to get the information they need, and maybe consolidate some of the steps that they have to take. You could still get the same feedback from businesses without so many individual steps. I don't think that's going to hurt the process.
And my second one is, your feelings on recreational marijuana?
Well, it's just, that's a matter of code and what the people of this, the voters want in this particular community and council. And if you're on a commission, you uphold the law. That's what you have to go by.
Thank you.
Andrea, what is your vision for Canyon City in the next five years?
In the next five years, I would like to see some magnets for our downtown area and our near downtown area that bring people into, to using what the restaurant facilities that are there, the businesses that are there. And one thing that I've thought about for a long time is to have some kind of an arts district, because we have a lot of good, great artists in the area that show their work, and I'm, I've been blown away by some of the stuff I've seen in exhibits. And I, in particular, I spent a lot of time working with, as a creative person, there's an arts district in Breckenridge where I lived for 20 years before, and it's really a hub, and it brings people from out of town, from, not just from the area, but out of town, with a lot of events and classes and that sort of thing, and it's a place for artists to do their work and sort of collaborate. And I think it's a great magnet, because everybody likes to look at art and see what artists are doing.
Thank you.
Number one, Andrea, thank you for being here, and thank you for putting in your resume. My question for you is, have you read any of the source documents, if I can call them that? You know, any of the, familiarized yourself with any of the code, Chapter 16, our zoning regulations, or Chapter 17, the development regulations?
I have been following what's available online of what the Commission has been doing, and I'm familiar with that. I haven't gone in to memorize the code, but I think it's something that, you know, I'm not an expert, I'm not an attorney, I'm not a developer, but it's something I think that I could work with and research as I go along.
Thank you.
Thank you for submitting your application. Kind of hinging on, or expanding on Mayor Smith's question, how would you, I'm going to say, rate yourself, or where would you, I'm not sure the exact terminology to use here, but what I'm looking for here is, in the Planning Commission, you're going to be, at times, faced with some really challenging decisions in terms of, do we move this recommendation forward to council? As an example, which you won't be dealing with this, but a potentially controversial development such as the gold mine that's happening, that's not a city decision at this particular point. But where would you rate yourself in terms of, I'm going to call it conservative to progressive in terms of growth of the community?
I think that my track record, and I've been before council on a number of issues over the years, I am an activist, I'm a community activist, and I, but by the same token, when you work inside city government, you have to rely on the law, and you have to work, you have to collaborate as a group. So, you know, I'm not going to be the lone voice in the wilderness if it's clear to me that this is not something, if something comes up that I can tell, if I'm the only person that thinks it's a good idea, that's, I'm not going to, you know, insist that they move ahead with it. I like to look at all the facts, I like to talk to the people. I've talked to a lot of business owners, I've talked to a lot of people that actually, just residents in this town, and I've learned a lot that way, listening. So, I guess, I'm probably, if you chop up what you're looking for into four parts, I'm probably somewhere in the third part towards progressive. You know, it's hard to say, if I, if you were to compare me to you, I'm probably, like, way out there. But I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's a subjective thing, it's a subjective thing. Yeah. I've been very active in trying to get city water for our part of town. I've been very active in trying to get information about Black Hills and our options, and all of these things requires a lot of research, a lot of collaboration, and, but by the same token, you have to work with the community. You can't just, the one thing I've learned over the years is that you can't go out on a limb and, while there's a whole crowd of people who are ready to saw it off behind you, that's, that's kind of where, you know, I've learned that. You have to build consensus.
Thank you.
The, unless we have, would you like to do another round? You'd like to ask another question?
I would please.
Please, sure.
Andrea, you mentioned that the downtown area was of particular importance to you. Can you tell us a little bit more why that area?
Because it's such a beautiful city, very beautiful old buildings, and it's kind of disheartening when you go downtown, or, you know, friends come in, and you never know whether there's going to be a restaurant, you know, there's not much choice in restaurants, and they kind of, I don't know what the issue's been over the years, but it would be nice to have maybe one or two more restaurants that you could depend on in the downtown area, or just little cafes, something that, when people do come to town, to come here for all the other wonderful things that we have in the area, that there's a little bit more for them down there. But it's such a beautiful place. I'd like to see it filled with people more, like on the weekends or in the evenings.
Thank you.
You said you've been following Planning Commission through online?
Yes.
Was there any issue on the Planning Commission dockets that stands out to you?
I was looking at the one, the Scholastica, that's the one that I was, have been looking at this week. I think that's a very interesting development, and I like, I really like the idea behind it, and how they're, how they're putting that, breaking up that space. And I, you know, as far as I can tell, it's moving along, it just takes time, because it's a bit, it's sort of complex, all the different pieces to it. I hear from a lot of people in town, oh, it's, it's taking too long. Well, things like that take a while, but you've got, when you're pulling together different kinds of densities for housing, but I think it's wonderful. I hope that it continues along the path it's on. Wish them success.
Thank you.
I'm good.
I'm good.
You had made a mention that, I don't remember your exact verbiage, but it was something to the effect that you're only one vote, but in case of a tie, that one vote controls the decision, so keep that in mind.
Right.
Okay, then, I think that, thank you, Andrea, and what we'll do is ask you to wait in the back room. We'll bring Dustin out, ask him some questions. We will vote, and we'll let you know how the vote has come out.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for-
And applying.
Yeah, absolutely. You'll come back in here. Well, I'm the tiebreaker today?
Well, yeah, because this is your meeting, it's supposed to be.
Well, hopefully, it doesn't, hopefully, there's a clear, better applicant that there will not be a tie.
The what?
So, hopefully, there's clearly a best applicant, so there's not a tie. I mean, that's best-case scenario. Oftentimes, it's unanimous.
Yeah, it's weird.
Didn't we, didn't we allow a mayor for that last time? I mean, there were lots of times we've had multiple candidates.
Well, technically, this is a city council meeting. Technically, she's mayor, she runs the meeting, they can't vote.
Okay. Well, we'll see.
Thank you.
Unless there's a tie.
Yeah. Yeah, you have been there, haven't you?
Right. Hi, Dustin, how are you doing this evening?
Pretty good, are you?
Good. We're good, I believe. What we're going to do is, we'll have each council member ask you one or two questions, and what we're doing is trying to ask pretty much similar questions, although follow-up questions sometimes take us different places than it did with the other candidate, but we're trying to ask you the same questions that that candidate was asked. We will, once, once we've heard from you, we'll excuse you, we'll have a discussion amongst us, we'll vote, and then Cindy will come in and let you know the results of that vote, so you'll know here tonight. And we'll just continue in the same way we started.
Let's let Dustin introduce himself.
Oh, yes, thank you very much. Please do.
I'm Dustin Moss. I own the Cold Stone here in Canyon City. I bought that a little more a year ago. I also have a financial services business I've been running about three years. I was a mom working prior to that.
Okay. And maybe tell us a little bit why you'd like to be on Planning Commission?
I think the biggest reason is, I honestly just want to be more involved in the community. I think it's, I mean, it's fun to have a business here in town, and honestly, local people have just been amazing. I don't know if close enough. Okay. That'll work. Oh, yeah, there goes. So, but I want to be more involved. I sat down with Justin Grantham a few months ago, and we had a long conversation about it, I know he was on the Planning Commission, and while talking to him, it was something he thought was a good start for really getting involved in the community and being able to, to help the best of my ability.
Okay, thank you. Andy?
Hey, Dustin, thanks for coming. What do you feel is the primary role of the Planning Commission in our city?
The primary role of the Planning Commission in our city? I honestly think that, I mean, it's kind of in the deal, it's planning, it's, I mean, the planning and zoning, it's figuring that out. I've only actually been to a couple of committee meetings, it was really interesting, but it's something that honestly, I don't know a ton about, but I know that it has to do with, I mean, how property is, well, zoned. So, I know that the, or I believe that the primary role would be just that, is, you know, making sure that everything works well towards what the city's goals are. I know, like, the meeting you guys had earlier, making sure that it's something that's going to do the best for, if you're making a change, or if you're making improvements, or, I mean, obviously, passing it to the council, but making sure that that kind of goes in line with what the city is wanting to accomplish.
Thank you.
I have two real quick. How do you feel about the deregulation of our titles and codes?
I don't really have a good answer for that.
If we, if we were looking at our current code, and we felt that it was really regulated, and we wanted to kind of get in there and take some of that regulation out to streamline some processes, how do you feel about that?
I think it's a loaded question. I think, I mean, honestly, it could go either way. Sometimes, there's a reason behind why things are done certain ways, and sometimes, it's the best thing has changed. So, it really just depends on, I guess, the situation. I think in a lot of ways, I was a training coordinator for Fremont County for about two years, and there were a lot of things that had to change, and we walked in the door, it was just obvious that there were some things that were not run well, there were things that worked really well back in the 80s and 90s that did not work today. So, there were things that had to change, but there were some processes that were there that there was a good reason behind them. I know that the comment I always used to hate was, the reason something's done is because that's always the way we've done it, and I hate that comment, because sometimes it is the best thing to, you know, to kind of back off and say, maybe, a little less regulation here would be beneficial for the city and growth. Yeah.
I hate that comment, too. That's kind of why I asked that question. My second one is, your feelings on recreational marijuana?
I'm not a fan, to be honest. I, from a law enforcement perspective, I think it's one of the worst things this state did, was that, I don't have a problem with it, I think there's massive benefits to it. My grandmother was on narcotics for almost 20 years, she was like talking to somebody who was high all the time, and they put her on CBD oil, and she is completely off of narcotics, and she's 89 years old. So, I think there are massive medical benefits to marijuana, and I will never deny any of that, but as far as the recreational use of, I was very against it, and that stance hasn't changed for me.
Thank you.
Dustin, you mentioned that the Planning Commission, that you felt like one of your jobs is to align your decision-making on the goals of the City Council. What would be some of your goals as far as the vision for Canyon City over the next five years?
Honestly, I want to see growth. It's, I think that the city has a lot to offer, it's a beautiful area. I went to high school here, I graduated high school here, I moved to California, I was there for about seven years, and there's a reason we ended up back here. It's definitely, I have a heart for the city, it's why I want to be more involved. And, but I'd like to see growth. I think that a lot of the complaints from the younger generation, which is kind of a double-edged thing, but is that there's not stuff going on here, it's like, they always feel like they need to go to Springs or Pueblo to do stuff, and, I mean, we have such a beautiful town, and there's something that, I mean, there's a lot to be offered here, and I think that growth is a, growth in general, bringing new business, bringing new people in, is just, I mean, it's a must for the city.
Thank you.
Dustin, the, the city has different ordinances and regulations. There's Title 16 zoning and Title 17, which is development of property. Have you, have you had a chance to look at any of those regulations?
I have not, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Dustin. I'm trying to look for, get a feel for where you're at in terms of your position with Planning Commission. As you may be aware, you're going to be faced over the rest of your term with potentially a difficult decision. I don't know what that decision is yet, but as an example would be, the recommendation to council for the gold mine, which is not a planning or a city council decision, but that particular development will potentially be a controversial issue as it moves through that whole process. My question is, where do you consider yourself to be in terms of the conservative or progressive end in terms of growth and development?
I'm very pro-growth and development, I think that's a big deal. I think, again, it comes back to the same thing, is, I think that when it comes down to it, it's, it's something that's, it's a necessary thing for the community, I really, I really feel like it is, but it's still kind of that double-edged sword. There are some things that it's not worth it to cut corners, it's not worth it to do things the wrong way, just because the goal is to grow. So, I guess it'd be kind of, it's hard to really say where I'm at on that spectrum, but I'm definitely for development. I want to improve this city in any way we can. Does that answer the question?
I don't know that there is a right or wrong answer. Thank you.
Andy?
The only thing I have left is, I've seen you at a couple Planning Commission meetings, is there anything that has stood out as an issue, or?
Not as, not as an issue. It actually, it really was, it just, the couple that I went to was, it made me really interested in the position, just because watching what was going on and seeing, like, you know, taking both sides of the story, and, you know, I mean, the one that I came to, the most recent one, was the one the guy was complaining about rezoning of properties over off of Central, and I was just hearing the, kind of, the other side of the story, and it sounded a little weird to me at first, as far as what the complaint was, but I could see a side of the story, so I'd definitely like to be involved in, being able to help with that if I can, whether it's, I mean, helping residents, helping with whatever that is.
Thank you.
The, I have one further question.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sure.
So, I want to do a little bit of a follow-up to Jim's question, where he was talking about as far as where you are on the spectrum of growth, but I think part of the nature of the question, too, was a little bit as far as your political standing between conservative to progressive, where would you rate yourself?
Political standing? I'd be more conservative.
And then there was a question, too, that the previous candidate kind of focused a little bit on was downtown, and seeing what they're, what they would want to see as far as downtown improvements, or being more vibrant, what would be your vision for that?
As far as downtown goes? I think there's a lot of things. It's, right now, it's a little difficult, I mean, when you go look at Main Street, I mean, no offense to your business, but there's a lot of barber shops, and there's a lot of, you know, hair boutiques down there, and that's not a bad thing, but at the same time, I think it'd be really good to attract some different businesses down there, attract some stuff that's going to attract people to Main Street more, so I definitely think that there's, there's some massive improvements that could be made there, and I think that 'd be amazing to see them. But I, I don't think that Main Street's the only place to focus on, I think there's other areas of town that could definitely be improved on as well.
Like what?
Well, I mean, across the board, down Highway 50 corridor even, just saying, some of the stuff that's down there, I've actually talked to Jerry Vanola, who owns the taxidermy school that's down there, it's the same thing, I mean, old buildings are all old and breaking down, and would it be something that maybe we could make some improvements on those lines? I don't know, but it is, I mean, there's a lot of stuff, I mean, parks in town, there's different things that could be done around town, I think, that could really improve. What's happened with the Duck Park is amazing. Honestly, I think that was a, that was a really good improvement, it seemed like a lot of fun, I love taking my kids down there, the splash pad's pretty cool. So, I mean, just stuff like that, but all over the city.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I've got one kind of follow-up question, too. This is perhaps a typical binder that we get for our City Council meetings, you get similar things, analyses prepared by staff for any particular issue that's coming in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. How are you with, how comfortable are you with doing a lot of reading and before the meetings, to be able to come as an informed individual to help make a decision?
I'm pretty comfortable with. I think about five years ago, that would have been a whole different answer, but I've been doing, I've been involved with investments, retirement planning, stuff like that for a number of years now, and the most recent one that I've dealt with is a book that's about that thick, that's all on codes and licensing for financial advisors and whatnot, and I'm actually pretty good at doing that kind of stuff, studying, and I'm, I'm pretty good at, you know, a couple days before, making sure I really understand material, that's something I'm used to doing for what I, for my financial services business.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
Thank you for your application and your time today.
Thank you for coming and thank you for your application. And, so, take him back.
So, as far as voting goes, we are writing it down, your name is on it, and it will be public record if they come into the clerk's office and want to see the results of the vote, so.
It's an open record, it's an open record request, so. And what I recommend we do is that we write down our first choice, followed by our second choice, so that the-
Yeah.
Well, that's true, well, that's a good point.
Usually, we have three or five, and that would be a little more pertinent, so, you will just start with your first one for right now, and turn them into Cindy, and I think she counts the, do I count the votes?
Yeah, because you can't count any. I mean, you can't-
Uh, yeah, because you can't count any, I mean, you can't, you and Cindy. Just tallying the votes.
Do you want to?
Oh, absolutely.
Those are, as we was mentioning...
I have not voted.
Clarify with the attorney, but those typically aren't published, but they're available for open records. But clarify that with Catherine or Cora.
Do you need to know if it's unanimous, not unanimous, what do you need to know?
I would like to know. See, it usually comes out that way. So we'll call them both out, and then announce that.
That's what we typically do.
Thank you Cindy. And it changes.
I guess I'm chairing the meeting, so, yeah, I get to.
And then, so what, he's got to show up at a meeting for swearing in? Or appointment?
This is, this is appointed.
Oh, that's right, we're appointed.
So it would be our next February?
Do we have to do a resolution?
Cindy, do you, do you swear them in?
Do we do a resolution on this?
No, we just announce the results.
Does it get appointed at a city council meeting, however, officially? This is it.
Okay, so, we did, we did vote, thank you both for being here, we do appreciate your participation, and we, you know, encourage that if you're not successful tonight, don't let this, don't, don't be discouraged, please continue to be involved, because this is, you know, there's several of us that have been on city council where we all started at the Planning Commission. But we did vote, and we did decide in favor of you Dustin, and so that's our decision, but thank you both. And do you know when the next meeting is?
I don't. Uh, I gotta skip it.
It's not on there.
It's not on there.
It's the last one. So it will be, look, the 26th of February.
And again, thank you to you both. I'm pretty sure we're going to still see you Andrea.
And openings, openings do come up all the time, so be checking the city website, because I know there's a Board of Adjustments coming open, and...
It is already posted.
Okay, it's already posted, and Planning Commission openings do come open all the time.
Or city council.
Are you saying something Jim?
I was going to say, we did a lot of city council appointments.
We have, we have.
We have.
That's true.
I was surprised. Thank you both.
Many thanks to you both.
You're welcome.
Thank you both.
And with that, oh, any other discussion? I'll close the meeting.